I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll do roll call. Supervisor Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Aliaga?
Do we need to make a motion to appoint you?
Not until roll call is done.
Oh, okay.
Trustee Aliaga here. Trustee Brown is here. Trustee Alamato?
Here.
Trustee Ritchie?
Here.
And Clerk Newbeck is scheduled to not be here. We have a quorum.
Good, thank you. Is there a motion to appoint Paul Brown as Acting Secretary for the evening?
I'm making a motion to appoint Paul Brown as a Secretary for this.
There are second?
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Paul Brown is the Secretary for the evening.
Just remember to go slow so I can get it right, okay?
Okay, you have in the packet a agenda. And is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented or is there an amendment?
Moved to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are you none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved as presented. Any board announcements? Board announcements?
I would like to make an announcement about the Fire Department. Have the open house on 2022. It's gonna be on October 16th from noon to 3:00 p.m. It's gonna be basically Fire Prevention Week. So it's gonna be something very much in for the public about safety and it's gonna be a very interesting event. Everybody is welcome. Come to enjoy the fun day with the fire station. It's gonna be a sitation drive, which is the main fire department. And then again, it's October 16th, Sunday from noon to 3:00 p.m. And everybody is welcome.
Thank you. Good information. I want to announce that I attended a meeting of the Open County Township Supervisors yesterday, and an announcement was made there. There's an entity by the name of SISMA, that's an acronym deal. And they are basically partnering with Open County Parks and Recreation to eradicate and work on invasive species, including phragmities. And the park has in its possession like a mower, a cutting mower, that they can use in the winter. And will come to sites, I think this is good information for our population and our residents, they will come to the site during the winter and cut this phragmities out. Just cutting it once probably isn't gonna get the job done, it's gotta be a series of cuttings, but this would be a good start to do. And I know they also have chemicals as well to work on these things.
As for people's private properties?
Yes.
They're gonna do that.
Yes, I think they will. Now, it'd be better for the property, in other words, there'll be a better likelihood that the county will go along with this if it's a larger piece of property, like two or three acres or more that's full of phragmities. But I would think that they'd be very interested in properties that are near water that would carry the seeds to other places. So that's something to keep in mind as well.
And there's gonna be any call symbol?
Do you know if people are charged? I think we are, we're a participant.
We are suspended from the program, yes. I'm not sure about that private property.
Yeah.
If it is, I would imagine it's pretty nominal.
It's not, in comparison to what it would otherwise cost especially.
Correct.
Yeah. We were also advised on Friday by the Michigan Townships Association that we are gonna be receiving a series of annual installments from a national opioid settlement. So there was litigation involving opioids, and there may be more cases than this, but in this particular case, we're gonna be receiving some annual installments. We don't know what the number is yet, but it's better to receive something than nothing. And Director McKee has also received some grant funding for risk avoidance, a risk avoidance program, RAP. Are you familiar with that one?
Yes.
You wanna tell us what that is?
Through the Michigan Municipal Risk Authority, they have a program called the RAP program. And it's all the communities in Michigan who belong to that pay into that, and they award grants for, to help you buy, purchase equipment and/or services or things for police, fire departments use RAP grants before. We have before, we applied for a new generator, new portable generator that we can use in case there's a big power outage, because the one that we have currently is as old as me, literally. Nineteen, it's over 50 years old.
Nineteen blank.
So we did apply for that, and we received up to $35,000 grant to cover the cost, to help cover us the cost of the generator. So that's a great thing, so we'd like to take advantage of that.
Great thing.
Worked out really well.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, any members of the public have an announcement?
I still have one quick announcement.
Oh, please.
I just wanted to, I did stop by for that Bucks for Buses event, and I thought the Parks and Rec Department did a great job with that. I didn't stay very long, but I heard a couple songs by the band, and it was sold out, and I think everyone there had a great time. I mean, people dressed up, came in, you know, character, and it was a great event, so kudos to the Parks and Rec for that. I think it was great.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because I stopped in there as well, and Jennifer Angus did a fabulous job. Kudos to her too. So, it was great.
Well, I actually wanna say something else. I actually stopped by too, but I first of all wanna thank you, because I know Trustee Alamato sponsored the event, and that was very nice of you. It was a great event. Actually, when I came, I was asking for you guys, and I said, "Turn right, left." I said, "Oh, no." But it was, it was a good event. I mean, I saw a lot of people enjoying, the band was great, and actually, I wrote my dad, he was dancing, I couldn't stop him, he kept dancing and dancing. I said, "Dad, stop." He had a lot of fun, but thank you again, Terry, for your commitment with the community.
Okay. Any announcements by members of the public? Including members of the public online? Okay, seeing none. Public comment. This is the time for comment by the public, up to five minutes, for matters that are not on the agenda. Any public comment, including members of the public online? Okay, hearing none of that, we are gonna go to the consent agenda then. Consent agenda has two items on it. Number one, approval of board minutes from September 6th. And number two, request for approval for the September 13, 2022 check run in the amount of $246,261. And to ratify September 2 payroll in the amount of $324,317.08. And September 9 payroll, $144,393.17. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, items one and two?
Moved to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any other discussion? Any comment from members of the public? Including online? Are you none? All in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, items one and two?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Okay, moving to regular business, we've got seven items tonight. And then we have a budget session that, I mean, I can't wait for that.
I know, it's exciting.
Rick's been practicing it all day.
Oh, yeah.
He's made me listen to him.
Yeah.
Okay, item number one on the regular business is a request to adopt a resolution to schedule a public hearing on the amended assessment role for Thandera District 1, which is a public road special assessment district.
Good evening, Township Board.
Good evening.
As you may recall, on October 5th of 2021, we approved, you approved, two SAD districts for Thandera, public road section and private road section. We have a couple of housekeeping items to address in District 1. When we put that role together, the last four years were based on an estimate of what the contract would be. Since then, the HOA representatives have supplied us with signed contracts and actual figures which need to be put in place on the role. And we had a resident call that had a vacant lot where the road was never developed in front of the lot, and that quarter unit of benefit needs to be removed. She has, she receives no benefit for snow plowing or any type of extraordinary winter maintenance. So that results in a negative $442 from the original rule. I'm here tonight to ask you to set a public hearing so that we may amend the SAD rule to reflect these new figures.
Okay, and it's necessary, of course, when you're gonna amend a role like this up to a certain level, to have a public hearing. The law requires a public hearing on this, and so we are here tonight to consider requests to set the public hearing.
Correct. And this amended role for District 1 actually results in a proposed negative adjustment of $149 per full unit of benefit. So their assessment will be going down.
Per unit of benefit?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's welcome news.
That is.
Welcome news.
I don't get to deliver that kind of news very often.
You're right, right. Okay, any, are you finished with this?
I'm finished.
This one, okay. Any discussion?
Yes.
I'm just gonna ask for the board, and then I'll get, I promise.
Sure.
Sorry.
Just a comment, I guess, for me, in case somebody in the public's watching this and they don't understand what this Thandera District 1 is about. It's basically the people in that subdivision are paying to have their roads plowed during the winter. So it's basically, the township is handling the money for those people to pay those bills. But it's paid forward by the people that are benefiting from that service.
That's exactly right. And I can add to that, now that you've been thoughtful enough to raise that, is essentially, this is a project that was initiated many years ago, and, let's see, we have the year in here.
1990s. It started in the 80s.
Started in the 80s, and Thandera, there were all private roads in this project, and people would come to the meeting just really anxious to have the roads paved and improved and drainage improved. And the only way to get that done would be, and they wanted the roads turned over to the road commission. And the only way to do that is to start a lawsuit and get the road commission's permission to convert the roads to public roads. We had to make all the improvements on these roads, a lot of construction, and the road commission had to approve the plans and the idea that they were gonna be converted to public. And because Thandera has tremendous grades and curves and things like that, the road commission said, "Our normal procedures and policies will result in not being able to conduct all of the road maintenance, winter maintenance particularly, on these roads." And that is, everything in excess of what our maintenance is, is gonna be the responsibility of the private owners. And so obviously, the private owners themselves don't have a good way to collect the money and so forth. So to facilitate all that, the township set up this special assessment to collect the private money on behalf of the people and then get the job done. And so that's been in place ever since, and so we're here tonight to continue that arrangement and amend the situation based upon some circumstances that have come to light, and the result is a benefit to the property owners.
Correct. The road commission just stated that by the time they get to those interior subdivision roads, it could be four or five days. This area would prohibit people from traversing down that grade and those winding hairpin turns.
Right.
To get out for work or get their kids to school.
Right.
It's very challenging.
So it was, I think, a really special kind of thing that the township did, establish these special assessment districts to get this done. Okay, any other comments from the board? I'm gonna, please, come up to the podium and tell us your name and address, so.
This is for you, Mr. Kelly. It goes for everybody here. This is just to clarify, we heard a lot of verbal.
Thank you.
Here, Mr. Fisher, I know you were involved in this.
Yes.
You were one of the main attorneys in this case.
Yep.
So you're very familiar with it.
Okay, I would just like to clarify.
You can tell us your name, please, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Cheryl Genakis, 8990 Woodlon Avenue, Clarkston, Michigan.
Thank you.
I would like to clear up some misconceptions proclaimed by Mrs. Feigley regarding the Thandera SAD. Number one, I provided a copy of the consent judgment to all the board members and Mr. Kelly. If you look at the last page, it states that the county will not do any additional snow plowing, other than what is already provided. That clarifies that the county does provide snow plowing for a portion of Thandera. I'm actually in Sunny Beach. Number two, provided is a letter from the legal department of Open County Legal Department that states they will plow Gaquwin to Michigami under their regular maintenance schedule. This is a regular schedule you guys have circumvented. Mrs. Feigley has stated several times, and she just did again, that it could be weeks before they get to our residences. Okay. Number three, provided is a copy of the Open County Road Commission regular snow route. Notice, it goes right by Ms. Feigley's residence owned on Pine Knob. Co-owner on Pine Knob. This is, she has never been snowed in, and she has no SAD for her snow plowing. She has no problems with it. It's the same route, the same exact route. Okay. Number four, copies of JEC Lawn Services contract. One inch of snow is a requirement for initiating service. Is this really extenuating plowing, or is this ridiculous? Number five, copies of two websites, including Laura, stating JEC Lawn Service is not in good standing and was dissolved on February 6th, 2021, before this resolution was ever adopted last year. This may explain why the township wanted to be the bank. No checks and balances. Who are these checks being made out to? There is also no changes made to the Thandera 1 public snow plowing contract whatsoever. None, except for a reduction in price which was less than 10%. Pictures of the terrible job, number six. These are pictures of the terrible job the private snow plower does, and the last page is another of the job the road commission does on Estin. Which looks safer? I have a question for Mr. Kelly. Mr. Kelly, how can a resolution?
Excuse me, you should address this to the board.
Okay.
The board can ask.
I would like to know how a resolution that already exists can be adopted again. How is this considered an amendment when it seems to be an addendum pertaining to Thandera 1? I'm not talking about 2, because there were changes in 2. There has been no changes other than the wording. Please look at the matters of fact, look past the disinformation before attempting to push this through. And I feel the same way, my neighbors feel the same way. These are the matters of facts of this case. It does not take a week to get out. We can go down Estin, it is a clean, clear road. What they are doing is making our road more unsafe, and they're charging us for something that has already been done by the county. You have circumvented their route, and that's all I have to say. And I thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for coming in tonight.
And I really appreciate it if people would read that last page. And you're a lawyer, you're the one who done it, so I'm sure you're very familiar.
I'm very familiar, very familiar.
There's some things that are very wrong with this.
Very familiar, well, I'm not aware of anything very wrong with it, but I will.
We might have.
Yeah, thank you. I will address one point that I think is relevant. You said that there were no changes, but there was a change made that Kim pointed out, and that was that there was a recognition that was inequitable to impose a full unit of benefit on this property owner.
And it was changed in the first.
Should I finish?
It's law.
Should I finish my statement?
Yes, I'm sure you can.
Okay, thank you. It was equitable to remove a full unit of benefit from one property owner that really did not have a street in front of her property. And so that unit of benefit has been reduced for her, so that it's more equitable in terms of the entire SAD. Otherwise, in terms of this contract and the contractor being, having the, its charter removed or whatever has happened here, it's not in good standing. That happens regularly to corporations when they don't file their papers, and it takes a very short time to reinstate them. I noticed that this is February 2021, so that's a year and a half ago.
It was dissolved before.
Well, that's what they call it, dissolved, and then it's reinstated when they file their papers.
If you look at Laura, that is very recent, they are not in good standing.
It says.
You can look today, you can look right now.
Okay, well.
And the charter of the property that.
Wait, 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 you've had your time to speak.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm just responding to the best I can, and the selection of this contractor really wasn't by the township. The selector was, selection was made by the residents who presented the contract to us. And so I would think that the issue of whether or not this person has filed all their papers and are, would be in good standing, should be addressed to them. And if they won't address it, then we should, we'll have to deal with it. But I think that would be the starting point, too.
I had a question for Mr. Kelly that wasn't answered at all.
Well, I'm not aware that there was a question that he needed to answer. Mr. Kelly, did you hear anything that?
Nobody answered.
I think you explained the amendment.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah. So, I mean, the truth is that the road commission will do winter maintenance, but it's clear that they insisted, the road commission insisted, that private maintenance, in addition or in excess of what their policy called for, would have to be privately financed.
That's from Michigami, yeah.
That's, that.
I have the letter right there.
Please, please, please. This is not a free-for-all at this point.
I'm speaking, don't you, I'm doing this with this.
So it's clear that some private finance had to be done. And so what actual, the actual work that had to be done was contracted for, and obviously, if anybody has ever lived on a road where the road commission does the plowing, they don't come out right away. And whether it's one day, two days, three days, we don't know, but on these roads, the road commission was clear that some extraordinary maintenance needed to be done. There's just, I mean, they insisted on that, and that's in the court orders and so forth, so. And the township passed a resolution at the time saying that they would attempt to set up a special assessment district for this purpose. Okay, is, yes, sir?
Can I just speak also?
Please, yes. Please, give us your name and address.
Evangelist Genakis, 8990 Woodlon Avenue, Clarkston, Michigan.
Thank you.
Okay, nothing was changed on a Thandera number one, on SAD number one. It's the same amount of parcels, residents, with no benefit was taken off on the original roll call. And is not a 10% increase in snow removal, only a slight.
And it's not a ten percent, ten percent increase in snow removal, only a slight decrease, less than ten percent. No reason to do, redo public number one SAD. Changes were made on the first roll call and Laura reflects as such. Agreement number two had some changes that needs to be redone. And, you know, as you say, Oakland County said that they would plow all of Algonquin from Estin to Michigami. And they would do it in an amount of time because everybody gets out Estin and all the other roads. That would also save the taxpayers some money too and save the people in Thandora Park some money too that are also paying double for snow plowing because they're paying for snow plowing and they're also paying for it in their taxes. Thank you.
So, okay, thank you very much. And I, and I will respond to that, too. I'm sorry to be talking so much. But what you're, what you're opposing, first of all, there is a change. There is a change, as I described a moment ago. But in addition to that, what you're objecting to is to the project. So in other words, in a special assessment district, there are plans and so forth established and a, and a project that is placed before the public in terms of whether the township should do the project. And the township, and their public hearing is held on the project and objections could be made. And people can, can go to the tax tribunal and challenge the township's determination on the project.
Oh, yes.
But tonight is not a special, a, a public hearing or a discussion about the project. It's only about the special assessment role, which is the second public hearing, where people can come in and object to the assessment on their property. But that's at the public hearing, that's not so much tonight. But we're, the idea is to set a public hearing to give people the opportunity to object to the assess, assessment role, which is individual assessments on that role. Not to the project. And if I'm hearing you correctly, you're objecting to the project. In other words, you're saying that Algonquin's not good, the other roads aren't good. That's the project.
Nope.
Well.
We are not supposed to be in there. We are in Sunny Beach and Oakland County does our road, that is their route. And you are circumventing that.
So you are objecting to.
To being in it, period.
You don't like me to finish my sentences?
I'm sorry.
You're objecting to paying any assessment, then?
Absolutely.
That's what you're objecting to.
Absolutely.
And that, a very fair objection to make here. Very fair objection. Yeah. So, but that would be when the public hearing is conducted.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments?
Paul, do you have a comment? Okay.
Am I running the meeting?
Excuse me?
Am I running the meeting?
Oh, no, I, I. You asked for the question.
If you'd like to make comment, go ahead.
Well, the only comment I will, I will have right now is, I will ask, to ask the attorney if that question the resident asked, it has been answered by Supervisor Fisher, I don't know.
I asked him that question already?
Well, I just would like to ask that question.
Yeah, I'll just put it on the record.
Fine.
Yeah, I was just gonna put it on the record.
Right, as I understand. As I understand the question, the question was whether or not the resident, resolution is amending the SAD, which it is. There has been a change identified by the assessor. And so the appropriate step is to, by resolution, amend and have a public hearing. And that's what we're setting tonight. So I agree, it is an amendment.
It's an amendment.
Yes.
That's.
Anything else? Jose, do you have anything else?
No, no.
Okay. Anybody else, any other members of the public, including online? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the public here, establishing the public hearing? Scheduling a hearing?
I'll move to adopt Resolution twenty-two-two-zero-two-zero setting a public hearing to hear objections to the amended assessment role for extraordinary winter road maintenance within the Thandera District One Public Road Special Assessment District for winter maintenance and set it for October fourth, twenty-twenty-two and authorize the township clerk to certify and file the same.
Okay, motion is made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion by the board on the, on the motion?
I could make one comment.
Please.
The, the JEC Lawn Service that is, is not in good standing is not the same company. It's not them. I just want to point that out. I've confirmed it, it's not them. I, it looks like them, but that's not them, it's a different company. And I'll find it and get it for you so you can see it.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's helpful. Seeing no other comments, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Um, it's a roll call. Resolution.
It does say roll call, civil majority.
Who seconded that?
Wow.
I did.
Roll call to set a public hearing?
No, it says, when you talk about vote, it says roll call.
Uh.
Right above the motion.
Yeah.
Trustee Aliaga?
I don't know why, yeah. Yes.
Trustee Brown, yes. Trustee Almatu?
Yes.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Supervisor Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Second item on the regular business is a request to adopt a resolution to schedule a public hearing on amended assessment role for Thandera District Two, which is a private road winter maintenance and repairs special assessment district. Kim?
Yes. Very similar to District One, we have some house cleaning items in the private road section. We had new paving parcels added to the original District Two for extreme winter maintenance. And in that process, we failed to identify that those were already being built in District One, which was established in the eighties. So we have five parcels to remove that were being double billed. We have a township-owned parcel that was assessed in error. And we had two non-conforming lots that were combined and a home that has been started. So the unit of benefit is being increased to one full unit for that parcel. So again, we are asking to have a public hearing set for October fourth, twenty-twenty-two to amend the assessment role to reflect those changes and incorporate the new contract amounts. For this district, the proposed amended role increases the one full unit of benefit from two thousand eighty-three dollars to two thousand one hundred twenty-four dollars over five years.
Okay. I just have one comment and see if you agree with me. The, the five parcels that had been double billed are not actually being removed from the district.
Correct.
They're, just the, the unit of benefit is being reduced.
They front both districts, they have frontage on public and private roads.
They're not being removed.
Right.
Because if to remove them would, would be changing the district.
Correct.
And we'd have to redo the district.
Correct.
So they're not being removed.
Right, they are present in both districts.
Yeah, okay. Any questions, comments by the board? Seeing none here, any questions or comments by the public, including online? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve a resolution to schedule a public hearing for District Two Road, Road Maintenance and Repair?
I'll move to adopt Resolution twenty-two-two-dash-zero-two-one setting a public hearing to hear objections to the amended assessment role for winter road maintenance and repairs within the Thandera District Two Private Road Special Assessment District for winter, winter maintenance and repairs for October fourth, twenty-twenty-two and authorize the township clerk to certify and file the same.
Has support, moved and supported? Is this a roll call as well?
Uh, yes.
Okay, roll call vote.
Trustee Brown, yes. Trustee Almatu?
Yes.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Supervisor Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Aliaga?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Kim, while you're up there, we have item number three on the agenda for regular business. And this is a request to approve the twenty-twenty-two tax rate across the township for, for the twenty-twenty-three budget year.
Yes, this has got actually a little bit of good news that the assessor gets to deliver, and that's rare. Preparing for winter tax billing on December one, the millage rates need to be approved and adopted by you for the twenty-twenty-three budget year. After the Headley Amendment rollback of point nine-nine oh-six, we end up with the millages shown on the L forty-two-nine, which totals seven point five-one-three-six mills.
You want to tell everybody what the L?
That is a tax rate request form that has to be turned into Oakland County to authorize the December one millage levy.
Okay.
Okay, that's seven point five-one-three-six mills includes operating, fire operations, police operations, and safety path. And those are broken down, point nine-four-four-four for general operating. Fire operations is three point three-eight-nine-three mills. Police operations, two point seven-six-three-seven, and that millage expires this year. Safety path construction, point four-one-six-two mills. Last year, we levied nine point five-three-zero-nine. So we're two point oh-one-seven-three mills less. And that is partially due to the expiration of the road millage and the, the rest is the result of the Headley rollback.
Okay. Is that the president?
That, that concludes it. So what I'm asking you to do is to approve those millage rates as reviewed by budget analyst, Mr. Jaeger. And set the rates so that we can put them on the tax wall for December.
Any questions or comments by the board? Seeing none, any questions or comments by members of the public, including online? Oh, I have two people online now. Okay. John, are you going out recruiting people to get, have them come in?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Seeing no comments, is there a, a motion to set the rate?
I'll move to approve the twenty-twenty-two tax rate request, L four-zero-two-nine, and adopt the Charter Township of Independence twenty-twenty-two millage rates for the twenty-twenty-three budget year as presented.
Moved, moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded?
Roll call.
Yeah, and, and unless there are any other comments, any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Trustee Almatu?
Yes.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Supervisor Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Aliaga?
Yes.
Trustee Brown, yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is number four. And this is a, a request to approve improvements to our intellectual property system.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure?
Yes.
Okay.
So during my assessment, since I've been here, we've been going through all the township systems, including the fire station, DPW, and town hall. And in my findings, I found that our firewalls are outdated or will be in the next few months. So what I'm proposing is to replace all the firewalls globally. So that'll include all three fire stations, the DPW and town hall, designing the ultimate system to where one leg goes out, the operations can still continue. Also with that is two-factor authentication. So that's an industry standard for security to protect our VPN users. So when they enter our network, we know who they say they are. So it's similar like what your bank would use to send you a text message to validate your identity. And third, we're going for the email security with the rapid increase of threats. The protections we procure presently are falling short. So this will enhance our email security and also archiving, which will be a benefit to our FOIA processing down the road, which will reduce the time to do FOIAs. This was not budgeted. Granted, we're still working with the Rick and Jerry to develop the IT budget. But I did work this through with Rick. Any objections to that? So I'd be asking for a total of eighty-nine thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars to complete these tasks as I've described them.
Okay. Uh, any questions or comments by the board? Brian?
I guess, is there any ongoing, is this gonna initiate like annual payments or annual costs that we're gonna have to, to maintain this?
This, so what I proposed is in my first year, covered in what's today, that'll take care of everything for three years. And then with the exception of the email, which will be, the email security will be in my budget for the remaining two years.
Okay, so the eighty-nine thousand and change includes everything for three years?
Yes, sir.
So in three years, does it start over again, or?
No, no.
It's just gonna be an annual maintenance?
It'll be maintenance until we, like, the hardware becomes end-of-life and it's not supported, then we'll have to look at changing options again.
Okay.
Yay, anything else?
Those maintenance fees are fairly nominal, right? A few hundred bucks or?
Uh, depends for the licensing. So since we're getting, our firewall has a very limited capacity to do threat inspection, we're increasing the volume of blades that can inspect or ransomware and things to that extent. So with those, that is, like you said, that's included in there in that three.
It might be a couple grand a year in licenses or something.
I don't have the breakdown for the licensing, but I believe it was. Excuse me one second.
He doesn't have the breakdown, he's gonna give you an exact number.
Mm-hmm. So roughly for the high-availability license, it was eight hundred and fifty dollars and the HA appliance, so yeah, right around there.
Yeah, I'm, I just wanted to point that out because it's a bit, it's a big spend. But the actual licensing for them to keep, continue to update that hardware is not super expensive.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Any other question, comments?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I'm glad to, to see this. As you know, lately, we have a lot of unsolicited or weird emails in come to, you know. And I, I know we talked about this before and I am very concerned about that. By approving this, it's gonna increase the security maximized, like, we won't have those type of threats anymore? Or we still will?
Correct. That, there'll be a little tuning period, but the reduction of the frivolous emails and things like that that were not business-related will drastically reduce.
Okay. It's important to me because some of those emails have been addressing not just to the board members, but to a lot of employees, you know?
Mm-hmm.
And it's very dangerous, you know? We as, as an institution, we don't want to get those kind of threats and compromise, you know, open order, you know?
Yep.
Information up there, so I was very concerned about it. But happy to see that you are being proactive and bring that to us, to the board and.
Yeah.
You know?
It's the right thing to do.
Any other questions or comments by members of the, of the board? Questions or comments by members of the public? Online? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Move to accept the bid for access in, interactive in an amount not to exceed eighty-nine thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and approve the reappropriation of funds from the Walden Road. Oh, excuse me, I guess I got that wrong, sorry. And then that, oh, I didn't do that right.
That's right.
Oh, I was in the.
You got it.
Yeah, from the Walden Road paving project and approve the following budget adjustment.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you, everyone. As I make a mess.
Okay. Item number five. It's a request to approve a group transit asset management plan presented by Derek Smith. by Derek Smith, and is there anybody here to cover that?
You want me to? I mean, I don't have to, but I don't think Derek's here.
No, Derek's.
He's on the west side. We should kind of cover it. I think he's not record for.
Just generally.
Yeah, very quickly. I know the board did have a question about the upcoming millage proposal as it relates to this. So this is basically a federal program that requires us to sign off on an existing relationship that we've had for the maintenance and, and care for our vehicles that assist the senior community center. We've reviewed the agreement, we know it's a federal program because the handout's 165 pages, but basically, we don't have any problem with it, it's not changing. We noted a couple of minor changes to the data processing, but nothing significant. And with regard to the actual question of the board, will this be impacted by the upcoming millage in the fall with regard to transit? And this will not, it'll still be a requirement, and we are still a sub-recipient of smart funds, and so we are basically required to do this regardless of the millage outcome.
Exactly right. I think we're required to do it if the millage fails.
Yes.
There will no longer be a smart millage in place, apparently, and, and so there may be some modifications in service, we don't know.
Right.
But, but that remains to be seen.
Right. I think there's, there's a number of ongoing contracts that depending upon the outcome of that ballot proposal will change, but with regard to our requirements under this program, we don't really have an option.
Right. Exactly right. Okay, any other questions or comments by the board? Any questions or comments by members of the public? Anybody online? John, there's still only two there.
It's not working.
Is there, is there a motion on this item?
I'm moved to approve the group transit asset management TAM plan, and direct supervisor Fisher, the accountable executive listed in the plan, to sign the 2022-2026 Smart Group Transit Asset Management Plan as the authorized representative of the township, pending legal review and approval.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion? Did I ask whether the public had any interest in this particular item? Any members of the public on this? Online? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's approved. Okay, item number six is a request to approve a proceeding with the next steps for the Downtown Development Authority Dixie Highway corridor improvement. This is a matter in which just a few weeks ago, we approved hiring a specialist, bond specialist, attorney, DDA specialist, to help us with this, and the very first and most important question we had to see if this project would be viable, this improving the Downtown Development Authority, approving Dixie Highway, was what kind of funding could we attract for this? And one of the concerns was, when I came into office roughly a little less than a year ago, was that using tax increment financing, which is what, what we utilize for the Sacha Bah corridor improvement arrangement, if we use that type of financing, we would really have a lot of other taxing units with the opportunity to opt out of allowing us to capture any of their money, and so we would not be really gaining enough perhaps to do all of the project that we wanted to do. But the good news was, and I investigated this concept, was that the township has had a Downtown Development Authority in place for decades, and this authority has never been disbanded or terminated. So the question was, since this Downtown Development Authority was in place before the law changed that allowed local taxing units to opt out and, and not allow us to capture their taxes, the question was to legal counsel here, do they still have the right to opt out since, since they didn't opt out or couldn't opt out at the time we created this DDA? And the very good news is that the attorney has come back with an opinion indicating that no, they cannot opt out of this, which means that, that we have the potential of capturing a significant amount of additional money and making this a viable project, we hope. We also have the possibility of attracting other grant money, state and federal, and we recently put in an application, I believe Mr. McKee was helpful on that, because part of this project will be doing utilities, and, and there may be grant funds for that along with some safety path money for this project. Really, it would be a beautiful enhancement, and so significant safety path improvements are contemplated. So the request tonight is, now that we have this legal opinion in place, is, is for approval of the board to move to the next steps of this project, which would involve reinvigorating the DDA and amending the ordinance of the DDA to allow us to go forward at this point, create a new development plan as well as a tax increment financing plan that, that Kim will be analyzing very closely, of course, to see what, where we are likely to be with this financing for this project. So really, the request is to have the board approve us moving to the next steps of this Any questions or comments by the board? Members of the public? Yes. Paul?
I don't see anywhere in here where we're talking about what it's going to cost, what these next steps are going to cost, and we've already indicated that nothing's been budgeted. And if I recall, we, we did budget and approve some money for Miller Canfield to do their work.
That's right.
But it appears to me there's going to be significantly more work being done in this step, and yet we're not approving anything in the budget for it. And I think the idea of, of moving forward with this DDA for Dixie is a fantastic idea, but I'm a little concerned about the timing of it right now because of inflation and all the pressures that are out there on folks financially, that we want to make sure we're really, really tight on, on what's being spent and how much. And I have a hard time approving something when I don't know what we're about to spend at all. There's nothing here about it, so.
Well, and I discussed this with Rick very, very carefully, and we really don't know, we won't know until we get some proposals by the people that are going to do this work. We, we know that there'll be some legal expense, and there is a significant amount left in the, in the attorney budget that we've already approved. And it's, and one of the really important things about moving forward on this now, and Kim may address this, is, is when we move forward with this, one of the things that happens with, with tax increment financing is it doesn't cost taxpayers any more money, the tax increment financing doesn't cost them any money. When the valuation increases as a result of the project, that increase over a certain base amount is captured by the township. So then we have the question, what's the best time to establish the base amount, which is established when we amend this ordinance? If that's what I'm proposing to do, and Kim, in terms of that timing, what is your recommendation?
There's going to be significant increases in value. The sales are dictating some serious market value increases along that corridor. It is most beneficial to capture revenues and establish a base here now before we, we get into those reappraisals and the market increases that are being dictated.
Yeah, so, so the point is that, that we won't spend a significant amount of money without the board approving a budget, and that's what, in the MAF here, that we're going to have to figure out what the budgetary implications are and, and determine, some of this money for the preparation of these things will be covered by bond financing as well. And so we're going to have to figure, figure out that part of it and then come back to the board for budgetary amendment.
So the part about capturing the base now, and I guess I didn't understand that, so there must have been a base before, right, when this thing was set up?
Yes.
But we're allowed now to just reset the base?
Yes. We, and we have to, we.
Mr. Kelly, is that?
Well, I haven't looked at it.
Okay.
I mean, you have an opinion on it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. But he, but he's not here?
He's not here.
Okay. So I guess the hard, the hard part is, I don't know if we're talking about, there's going to be prep work done by, I believe by.
Carlisle.
Carlisle Warman and attorneys, and I don't know if it's $10,000 or $100,000, that's my concern.
Well, we're not going to spend any significant amount of money without coming back to the board.
So can we put a not, a not to exceed, so we know? Because you're saying significant, but significant to one person is not the same as somebody else. I would just like to know that the board's going to approve some amount, and if it's going, if, if the projections from the consultants you're working with are going to exceed that amount, that the board should know, that's all.
Exceed that, that amount that won't be reimbursed by bond financing?
So, well, from an expenditure standpoint, where it comes from, just because it comes from somewhere else doesn't mean we shouldn't be prudent about how we're spending it.
Of course.
So for me, I just want to know, is $25,000 enough for these folks to put work together to determine? Is it less than that?
I suspect it'll be less than that, and, and.
Okay.
It'll be much less than that before we have to come back and do a budget adjustment if, if needed.
All right.
Yeah, so if you say.
So there wouldn't be a problem putting that in there and?
No, I mean, if you want to put another, so we already, we've already approved 10. Some of that has been expended, but you want to set another amount? Not to exceed?
Well, I'd like to hear from the rest of the board, I guess.
Okay.
Jerry, oh, excuse me, supervisor.
That's okay.
How much has been?
Jerry's fine? Yeah.
Okay. How much has been, we have been spending in attorney fees so far?
I think $1,600 roughly.
$1,600, okay.
Out of the $10,000 approved.
Okay, because when we approved this, we were paying for someone to look into this to see, is this something that we want to do now? And now we're going to approve this to, to move forward. To move forward with that.
So if we agreed to add another $10,000 to the, to raise that expenditure to $20,000, we should be covered to have work done and have it come back to the board in the near future?
I'm sure that's right.
Well, I just want to know about, I'm not familiar with what DDA, quite frankly, you know, I mean, be honest to you, this is some decision that is going to be for a long time decision.
Yeah.
And the next board, which is in a couple of months, is going to deal with that, we're going to deal with that, and I'm not familiar with this, with this. I don't know how popular it is. I, I actually asked a couple supervisors about DDAs, and they are not much familiar with that. I mean, they have other options, like we have currently, it's a CIA.
Yeah.
Which is Sacha Bah.
Yeah.
Do you think maybe that's something we're looking for?
Well, I can probably help a little bit, but only because we've been involved with this when we did the Sacha Bah corridor, so I learned, as did some other board members, it's a little bit different, but when we talk about, and this is good for the public too, when they talk about capturing the base value, so what happens on something like this is the properties that are within that district, let's say they're worth $10 million in total. That's a small number, but I'm using a rounded number. They're worth $10 million right now. A project's going to take place to help increase the values of those properties and make them nicer and a better place for the public to go and use those services. Over the years, those projects are going to increase the value of those properties way above $10 million. As the property values increase, their taxes will go up on those, and it's almost all commercial properties, and so the tax values will go up. We get to take a small part of those tax increases and use it to pay for the improvements that we funded ahead of time. And we did this for the Sacha Bah corridor in a, in a similar way. So in what, so what the assessor, because assessor helped me a lot because she indicated that we want to capture that base now, because if we wait another year, the base is going to have already jumped up a lot, and we won't be able to get as, as much tax dollars paid back into the coffer as we would if we start looking at it now. And so that's why I, if you'd like to speak again, I don't know if I said that right, but.
Just to simplify that, if, if the base value is $10 million and it goes up $3 million a year, in a DDA, the DDA captures the revenue from that $3 million a year. The original revenue established at the, whatever the base value is, continues to go to the taxing authority.
In other words, the increased value times the tax rate.
Right.
And then that'll be used to pay the, a bond if we do a bond.
Right, and this is infinite until the district is abolished or there's no, the township doesn't want to do it anymore. In a CIA, there's a specified term, and you're only collecting a percentage of that increase in value.
Perfect.
In our case, it's 50%.
Okay.
Until, those are specified projects that have a budget and a ceiling to be met.
So, thank you. Would we expect this to be back in the next 60 days, or it could be longer than that?
I'm hoping so, yeah. I'm hoping so.
All right.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
And then if, if it comes back and the board wants to take it, would it be some public hearings and things like that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's going to be carrying on. In the next couple of months, we're going to get more information to start making decisions, but probably not fully make the decision right away.
Right, right. There'll be proposed improvements to do in the project, the tax increment financing plan, all those kinds of things. And to answer the question about using a corridor improvement arrangement, if we did that, we wouldn't get the broader capture, because we would be establishing a new corridor improvement authority that was, would be established after the date that the statute was passed, the law was passed, that allowed other communities to opt out of it. Whereas the DDA was established previously, and now we have the opinion saying that they cannot, cannot opt out because of its pre-existing status. So that's why we didn't go in the direction of a corridor improvement.
Okay. Just a quick question. I hear, I remember, we used to have a DDA in Dixie Highway, right?
Yes.
And what happened with that? It was defunded, or what happened?
Yeah, it did a really, a lot of work, a lot of work, a lot of improvements.
Back in the 80s, that was the mid 80s when they expanded, basically put the center turn lane on Dixie Highway, widened the road, we put in streetlights.
Yeah.
A number of things back in the 1980s.
And basically, this is the same DDA we're reactivating.
Same DDA, yeah.
It's the same one.
It's been dormant. We tried to reactivate it in 2008, during the recession, to do some things, but just as you were saying, all the values were going down, so there was no, because of the depression, really, so there was no opportunity to, to raise money to, to provide help for those businesses.
Right.
So now that the economy is going good, like you said, this is a prime opportunity to start to resurrect it again and try to move forward with these improvements.
Yes, and then, and probably one of the most important things is that the, the result of this is not an increase in taxation to taxpayers, it's just a matter of capturing the increase.
We're banking that improvements on Dixie Highway are going to improve property values, not, not trying to impose a tax on them.
That's correct. That's correct. They'd be paying the same amount of taxation they pay one way or the other.
Hopefully stimulate activity that.
Yes.
That creates improvements.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
I think Paul already asked, that was going to be my question about public hearings, first of all.
Mm-hmm.
And the second one, I know other communities that have a DDA, there's people technically on that board.
Yes.
And how are those people chosen? Are they appointed?
They're appointed, yeah.
Okay.
They're appointed, and then I think.
And is it like usually two-year terms, like your other things, or?
I'm, I think they're a little longer, in two years.
Are those appointments are by the board?
Yeah, yeah. In addition to DDA board here, because we have a good possibility, if that's included in the development plan, of improving some residential along in the southeast part of the township, southeast part of Dixie Highway. the, of the township, southeast part of Dixie Highway, we may need also a neighborhood board, too, neighborhood representatives, that will have to come in, too.
Oh, like the bluffs?
Yeah, the, actually, further down, too. Yeah.
Joseph, I have a la- last question, and it's for our municipal attorney, then, if you can answer this question, it's just concern, you know, the next couple of months, I'm gonna be dealing with this, I just wanna make sure about, this is just a question. And I know you represent other communities, my question is, in other communities that have a DDA, it works good, or you have any problems that you saw during that?
Yes, I mean, I think Ms. Beagley summarized the distinctions between them. A DDA is basically perpetual, whereas a CIA has a more definite term. So, those are the big differences, and then, of course, the capture on a CIA can be adjusted, usually it is 50%, on a DDA, it is the full incremental amount. So, DDAs are very successful across the state, some places do have problems with DDAs, because they are self-funded, once the board's appointed, they operate within their own guidelines and bylaws and the plan that's approved by the board. So, as long as that's okay with the township, they work, they can work well together.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments by the board?
I have one last question.
Yes.
So, the, the people that might come up with these plans, do they have to go out to bid also?
Well, it would be Carlisle, the planner, township planner.
Okay.
Would do it. And he would merely be proposing it, first to the DDA board, and then if the D, the DDA board, I think it's the DDA board that conducts the public hearing, and then they would make a recommendation to this board, and this board would make the final decision.
Okay.
Okay, any questions or comments by members of the public? Anybody online? So, Paul, why don't you make the motion, because you wanna insert that limit?
Oh, 'cause I gotta put a limit on, so, yeah, so basically, we're approving, getting more, basically, we're approving, getting more information from the consultants towards this project. We haven't approved the project yet, right?
Right, and, and, but I would also say that one of the things we wanna do is move toward the adoption of the ordinance as quickly as possible, so create the ordinance, because that sets the base, I believe. Once the date, on the date the ordinance is approved, that's what sets the base, I believe.
Right, well, that's, I mean, we're, we're approving, I'm not gonna change it from what it's written here, except that we're gonna cap, we're gonna, we're gonna cap the expenditure toward this at 20 grand, and then, you know-
Yes.
Information's then gonna come back to the board-
That's right.
...with more substantive decisions by the board in the next few months.
With, with a bu- budget amendment and with, with explanation.
So, we're not making any decision to approve a DDA?
No, we're not approving it, nope.
Okay.
We're not approving a DDA.
No, we're moving to those steps.
We're, we're, yeah, basically, we're gonna start getting information now about moving forward. We're, we're months from approving it.
Okay. Well, if we adopt the ordinance, we'd be establishing the new DDA.
Right, we're not doing that tonight.
We're not doing that tonight.
We're not doing it in two days.
I just wanna be clear.
Taking a step to put everything together to-
Yeah, things are gonna be put together, and I, I'd be surprised if it's back in the next 60 days, but-
I hope it is, I hope it is just to set that base.
I would list-
What's the deadline for the base to be set?
I would think the calendar year.
Before the end of the year?
The tax day is December 1st, so would it be December 1st?
December 31st is tax day, and there's been certain times when I've seen DDAs established, and they're using the prior year's base value.
Right.
So, I'm not sure of the legalities of that, but I would-
Well, they can find that out for us as they look into this.
Right. I would just highly encourage you to do it before 2022.
Before 22, yeah.
23.
Yeah, this, this, quickly as possible to act on it, because it may come here and we'll have to make adjustments, or who knows what.
So, by December 1st, you're saying?
Yes.
December 31st.
Oh, December 31st, so, so we have time to, to make that decision, so we're not proving anything, you just-
We're proving, moving forward with the next steps.
Move forward with more information.
Next steps.
And you're gonna put a cap of $20,000?
Yes, I'm increasing the current budget from 10 to 20.
Okay.
Um, let's see. Move to approve the pursuit of steps for the improvement in economic development of the Dixie Highway corridor in the township, including actions to, one, amend the ordinance governing the downtown development authority to reflect an intent to pursue, pursue improvement and development of Dixie Highway corridor within the township, two, prepare new development and tax incremental financing plans for the proposed improvement and development of Dixie Highway corridor within the township, together with related steps for the establishment and financing of the DDA and proposed project based on the existing downtown development authority of the township, and increase the budgeted amount from 10,000 to $20,000 for this work as it is to be amended.
Support.
Okay, moved and supported, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Good progress. Uh, number-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Ron.
You made the motion, I was-
Oh, I'm sorry, I made the motion, who made the motion? No wonder I wasn't listening, I was talking.
The guy that's not the secretary made the motion.
It's not, it's not, not normal, right?
Item number seven, request to approve 2022 budget amendment number 24, to remove certain budgeted safety path projects from F-22 approved budget. Mr. Yeager.
Good evening, everyone. This is just a little bit of housekeeping here for the Safety Path Fund, which their budget is getting presented tonight. There's three projects that are currently budgeted for 2022 that are not going to happen, they have actually been pushed out to future years for various reasons. The three projects are the Clarkston Road project from Wingate to Sashaba, it's about $250,000, it's been moved out to 2024, and the total cost estimate has also increased from 150,000 to 400,000 on that project. There has been a small amount that was re-appropriated for the Safety Path master plan, so the remaining amount of $225,000 is gonna be removed, or would like to be removed, for 2022. The OHM construction engineering for Safe Routes to School project, $250,000, has been moved out to 2023, and that's, again, due to delays and cost overruns, and the total cost estimate has increased about $58,000 to 200, or $308,000. So, the full $250,000 budgeted in '22 needs to be removed. And then the Walden Road widening project, there's $300,000 budgeted, or, I should say, it's been moved out to 2025, and that's, again, due to delays in the Safe Routes to School project. The full amount needs to be removed as well. The reason that we're mov- removing these things is, it's actually kinda twofold here, because number one, it cleans up the 2022 year and gives us a good projected ending balance for Safety Path, which is important, because, again, if we have these projects budgeted in future years, now we're double dipping. So, we have to get rid of the projects, so they don't basically deplete our fund balance fictitiously, so to speak, so we're just removing those projects and just rebudgeting them in future years. So, this is just, it's just cleaning up fund balance is really what it's doing.
Where's the parking place for the money?
In my backyard, no. Because there's a lot of it, no. No, but that's really all we're doing, and, and these, it's basically gonna give you a better picture when we actually present the Safety Path budget later on, as to what our real fund balance is, is looking like.
So, does this go back to fund balance, then?
It really does, yes, it does.
That's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah, it does, yeah, it just won't get spent, so it really doesn't come out of fund balance, so to speak.
Got it.
Okay. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments by the board? Members of the public? On this item? Anybody online on this item? Saying none, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the 2022 budget amendment number 24 as follows.
Second?
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now, we go into a budget session, and Rick is going to enlighten us about the-
Can we just take two minutes and bring the table and stuff up here, so we can bring up-
Can we take five minutes?
Sure, five minutes for recess. Five-minute recess. Reconvene at, say, 20, 20 after.
Why he didn't have his table?
Lead us in that.
Thank you, Mrs. Supervisor. Tonight is the first of three budget sessions that we're going to have over the next several meetings. We're going through various funds tonight. Basically, a quick rundown on fire capital improvement plan, their narrative, the summary. We're going through their actual fund budget itself. We're doing police, the CIA, CBG, Independence TV, Safety Path, North Sashba Debt Service Fund, and Walters Lake. Those are the funds that we will be discussing tonight. The other funds that are left off, the general fund, Parks and Rec, Sewer and Water, those will be presented in future meetings. So, starting off, we're going to start with the fire department, CIP narrative. Basically, what this narrative is telling you at this point is they're looking at spending about $6.8 million over the course of 15 years. They have everything broken down on this narrative, basically listed under three different categories. We have apparatus purchases, which are things like your staff vehicles, ambulances. What else do we have? We have brush trucks, fire trucks, engines, anything like that that falls under apparatus. They've got it listed here as to what year they're planning on purchasing it and what they're actually going to purchase. They've also got an equipment section. This would contain your cardiac monitors, your medical CPRs. Those are all things that are purchased over periods of time. And then the final area that they cover on here is Fire Station 1, 2, and 3 renovations that they have planned for the future as well. So, that's basically what the narrative tells you here. There is the very next, actually, page 3 is the actual CIP schedule itself. And this shows you the activity, actually, from 2020 through 2039, but we're only really looking at 23 through 39. And if you go all the way to the very bottom, that's where your funding is taking place. And you can see that the money that we have coming in from the actual fire fund that funds this CIP fund, there's definitely enough contributions coming through here to basically get us all the way out through 2039. So, their CIP plan as of right now is fully funded through 2039. The next schedule after that is page 4.
Can we ask questions at this point?
You can ask questions whenever you'd like.
Chief, I noticed that 2035, 36, and 37 are going to be really tough ones expense-wise. Are you going to be squirreling money away or is this just pushing it out there someplace for three major, major purchases?
No, it's just the way it worked out in terms of what do we need to purchase up? And that's just, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah, it just worked out that way, so.
So, we'll have to figure out a way to make sure that you've got the money in your fund balance.
Sure, sure.
It's going to change over time, too. If the equipment breaks down sooner than we thought, we have to make purchases quicker or not, so it's a work in progress.
Okay, this is just kind of throwing it out there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have something to throw. I was just thinking that is there a way we could look at these future purchases in consideration of doing leases on this equipment and using the money to pay the unfunded liability on the pension plan? And, I mean, I don't know where rates will be, but I do know that because we're closing the plan the way it was and given what's happened with the market recently, I'm expecting when the numbers come in on the next thing, we're going to have a bigger hole than we had. And I just wondered what that might look like, and I'm just throwing out there as an idea that something you guys might look at as a projection of what would happen. Because for me, even if, I don't normally like to lease vehicles. These would be some big leases, but man, if we find a way to use money to get the pension liability paid down until it's gone, because we've already now capped it, pretty much, that would be a great accomplishment for the township and ultimately, I think, would lead to increased available funding on an annual basis for actually fighting fires and doing what we need. So, nothing's needed, but I would love to see something like that maybe in the next year.
Yeah, as I say, we can certainly look at that. It's kind of a new trend.
It's kind of an out of the box, but yeah, yeah. And it give us a chance to pay down the liability, which has always been a concern for me.
Yep.
Is there an assumption, too, that we're keeping the millage rate the same throughout this period of time?
I mean, there are decreases from Headley and stuff, yes, but then the millage is going to get renewed here in, what, a couple of years, I think, to be another 24.
24, I think. But I guess I'm just saying for your, one of your assumptions that you used across here is it's the same millage rate. You're not proposing to change the millage rate at it.
Not at this point, no, nope. It's just going to be whatever that millage rate is and then pulled down by Headley. Yep, that's it. As of right now, but at least those are discussions that I remember having, so.
Okay, I'm just, that's, yeah, a lot of these are, you know, usually have a list of assumptions that you're, you know, it's your baseline and it's what we're factored in, so.
Right, right, yeah, we'll come across that when we get into the actual fire fund itself. We'll talk about the millage rate. As mentioned on page 4, that is the actual budget for the fire CIP fund. Just throws the, all the numbers down by here, and you can kind of see the progression and, you know, on the fund balance. So, that's basically all that statement is in there for, is just to kind of show you that there is a budget for it, and the items that have been on the CIP schedule are budgeted in the respective years, 23, 24, and 25. There's no further questions with that. We'll move on to the actual fire fund itself. This particular narrative is actually broken down into four categories. It's broken down between revenues, labor and benefits, operating capital costs, and transfers. We're looking at, from a variance standpoint, because we do look at variances for, you know, the differences between the budget years, 23 versus 22, so we look at variances between the two years, and we're looking at anything greater than $5,000 to provide an explanation for, anything less than $5,000, we've mentioned it, but we don't really talk too much about it at all. So, from a summary standpoint, in summary, revenues are projected to increase $335,000 or 4.5%. Labor costs are projected to increase $410,000 or 7.2%. Operating capital costs are projected to decrease $269,000 or 16.1%. And operating transfers are projected to remain unchanged when compared to 2022. And then our overall increase to fund balance came in at $73,000, which is about $195,000 better than 2022. So, moving into the assumptions, requesting 3.3893 mills adjusted for Headley. The original millage approved back in August 4, 2020 was at 3.4509, so Headley has pulled it down to its current level. Wage increases for union and non-union positions in 2023, 3 and 1/4, 2024, 3 and 1/4, or yeah, 3 and 1/4, and in 2025, 2%. The fire chief position wage increase in '23 through '25 is 3 and 1/2%. Medical benefit plan coverage for 2023, we used the state caps. They went up 1.3% in 2022. That number always makes me nervous because it's so low. I'm surprised it's so low for this year, just, you know, based on what's going on in the medical industry, but it is what it is. I've actually used a 4% increase for the following two years, '24 and '25, just to bring it more in line with where I feel it's going to wind up, because we are going to get a hit at some point for this. Dental and vision premiums budgeted to increase 10% each year. Life insurance, short and long-term disability, we project about a 5% increase on that every year. We do have $200,000 in this budget to contribute to the pension expense, DB MERS, to try to pay that down, and then we continue funding the capital improvement plan for future purchases, which we've kind of gone through and touched on. So, getting into the individual categories, revenues, increases to revenues. We're looking at property taxes, they're up about $422,000 or 7%, and that's due to increased tax values and the millage rate. Charges for services, ALS, up about $136,000 or 20%, and that's due to an anticipated increase in call volume over 2022. Charges for services, village of clerks, up $14,000 or 8.7%. That's due to an increase in the village taxable values along with the increase in the millage rate. And there's three other revenue accounts, all less than $5,000, that are increasing the revenue budget by about $4,500. Significant decreases to the '23 budget when compared to '22. We have other federal grants down $250,000. This is your ARCA money, roughly, that's a 50% decrease. All we're doing here is we're moving the money out to 2023. We haven't spent any of it in 2022, so we're moving it out to '23 and '24, because those are the years that we feel that those monies will be spent, so that's what the reduction here is for. Then we also have interest income, market value adjustments. That's projected to decrease about $13,000 or 34%. And again, that's primarily due to continued low interest rates in the market. Moving on to labor and benefits, increases to them. Wages, full-time, $262,000 increase or 8.3%. Again, that's due to the 3 and 1/4 to 3 and 1/2 wage increases and then the CBA wage step increases that are also coming into play for various firefighters, new firefighters. Payroll taxes, up $19,000 or 7.2%, again, that's due to the wage and step increases. Pension expense, DB MERS, up $121,000 or 17%. Again, that's due to wage increases, and we threw an additional $75,000 into that line item to, again, try to pay down some of the unfunded liability. Well, just to answer, I know you have a question floating around, I know in your head already, there's, as I mentioned, $200,000 that we're going to pay towards it. It was originally $125,000, and we took it up to $200,000, okay? So, we did find an extra $75,000 to throw at that. Decreases, wages, overtime, down almost $10,000 or 3.6%, and that's due to the department being fully staffed, so there won't be as much overtime being used. And there's three other labor and benefit accounts, all less than $5,000, that are decreasing labor and benefits by $4,500. Moving on to operating capital costs, significant increases. Operating supplies, medical, $16,000 increase or 22.2%, and that's due to an expected run volume increase and medical supply costs that go along with that. Computer supplies, up 12, almost $13,000 or 91%, and that's due to the purchase of new network infrastructure equipment. Firefighting gear, $39,000 or 100% increase. This is a new line item that I was asked to create. They wanted to pull firefighting gear out of the clothing line item, because it is such a large item that they have to do, so we, they actually just wanted to budget it separately. So, that's what that line item is. You will see, conversely, you will see a decrease to the clothing line when we get to there. Contractual services, ALS, $9,000 increase or 23.7%, again, due to the expected run volume increase. Insurance and bonds, up about $6,300 or 7%, and that's due to projected increase in rates. Building and grounds maintenance, $10,000 increase or 9.8%, and that's to replace landscaping and appliances at Station 3 and adding a bench outside of each station. Professional development, up $7,500 or 28.8%, and that's due to ACLS slash PALAS recertification in '23. I don't know if you want to tell what those acronyms are, because I don't know what they are.
Those are trainings and certifications that our paramedics all have to receive every couple of years, so our department will have to receive that training next year. One's advanced cardiac life support training, that's the ACLS, and PALS is pediatric advanced life support, so it's just every two years firefighter, paramedics have to renew their certificates for that, so we have a plan for that because there's a cost of research.
Perfect, thank you. There are 12 other accounts, all less than $5,000, that are increasing the expenditure budget by about $20,000. Decreases to operating capital costs. We have clothing, $51,000 decrease or 60%, again, due to unspent funds from '21 that were transferred into '22, so it made that number high. And then, due to the, we had supply chain issues and different things like that, we weren't able to get some of the clothing and stuff like that until earlier this year. And then the addition of the firefighting gear account, which obviously pulled money out of this account as well. Contractual services, down 13,500 or 19%, and that's due to a reduction of service contracts. There's a couple of them that I asked about. One is Lexipol, about $9,300 there. It had something to do with manuals or supplemental manuals, training manuals or something?
So, that was a contracted service. It was a company that provided SOPs or policies to the fire department. They auto gen, I shouldn't say auto generated, but they would generate the policies. And since I've gotten here and decided we're not going to use that service, that we internally will develop our own policies for the fire department by our staff officers and our operating officers there, we'll create our own policies moving forward, so I'm paying somebody else.
Another one that was brought up is the FIS insurance, about $6,000. Had something to do with part-time insurance?
Yeah, I believe, Renee knows that a little bit better than me, but I believe that was when we used to have part-time employees at the fire department, and that was an insurance that was carried on them.
Yes.
And we no longer have part-time employees that need that insurance, so we basically eliminated it.
We have the on-call program.
Okay. Legal fees, decrease of $5,000 or 16.7%, and that's due to the completion of the IAFF-CBA negotiations in 2022. Telephone, down $6,500 or 25.5 due to reduction in telephone lines. Vehicle repairs and maintenance, down $25,000 or 22.7. That's due to increased number of repairs occurred in '22 that are not expected to recur in '23. Keep your fingers crossed on that one, right? Small equipment, down $32,000 or 51.6% due to the completion of physical equipment purchases made in 2022 that, again, are not expected to recur in '23. Equipment, $5,000 and over for ARCA, basically, projected to decrease $250,000 or 50%. That's due to allocating American Rescue Plan project funding dollars to '23 for the purchase of a new ambulance. Then there are three other accounts, all less than $5,000, that are decreasing the expenditure budget by about $7,100. Moving on to operating transfers, there really are no increases or decreases to operating transfers. So, items that could impact this budget during '23 that may, that are not budgeted currently, resurgence of COVID-19 pandemic, major equipment breakdowns, required repair or replacement, major building repairs, higher-than-anticipated fuel costs, significant increase or decrease in run volume, and customer non-payment of EMS buildings. Starting on page 8 is the actual budget itself, which you can see and look through the numbers if you want, but everything that we had just discussed basically addresses all of the variants that you see out there between '23 and '22. Are there any questions with the fire fund budget?
Seeing none?
Seeing none. We'll move on to police. I think you're also.
Chief, I guess one thing I'd like to get an update on, occasionally it doesn't have to be tonight, but we talked about, we changed our billing methods for, to try and collect money, you know, on the LLS services. I just, I could get a, you know, somewhat touch point as we move forward, you know, is that improving or not?
Okay.
With, you know, the changes that we made.
I think we might have some numbers coming in shortly.
I'm expecting something coming.
Okay, I mean, like I said, it doesn't have to be tonight, but I guess future meetings, I'd always like to hear, kind of get back to that and just see if the changes we made are, you know, driving any improvements or, so.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Lieutenant's got to do all the talking now?
Give you something to follow on. Give him something to follow on.
Don't want him making it sound like it's going to be super easy for him, you've got to work for this.
Got to work for this, okay, you can take over. Okay, we're all set, now let's move on to the police fund. We're going to be looking at variances greater than three thousand in this particular one, so in summary, revenues are projected to increase about three hundred and five thousand dollars or four point nine percent, labor costs are projected to increase fifteen hundred dollars or one point eight percent, operating costs, capital outlay, operating transfers are projected to increase about three hundred and twenty-eight thousand or five point one percent, and our overall planned decrease to fund balance came in at about forty-four hundred dollars, which is about twenty-four thousand dollars less than twenty-two. If the numbers come in as anticipated, the ending fund balance will come in about two, almost two point one million dollars, of which seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand of it is over the twenty percent reserve that we've kind of talked about with the police fund. So assumptions used to repair this budget, the improved millage of two point seven six three seven mils, that's been adjusted for the Hadley rollback, we have a three point two five wage increase for your office staff in twenty-three and twenty-four, and two percent in twenty-five. Hospitalization, same as what we did in fire, one point three percent increase in twenty-three, and then a four percent increase in twenty-four, twenty-five, ten percent increase for dental vision, five percent for life insurance, short and long-term disability, and then the county, or the current contract with Oakland County expires at the end of 2024, and we assumed a five percent increase in 2025, just not knowing, and that's been kind of passed along to us, you should probably figure about a five percent, might even be a little high, but five percent we're going to run with for right now. We're going to continue budgeting for the neighborhood road improvement project in each of the three years that we budget. So start looking at significant increases to the twenty-three budget when compared to twenty-two on the revenue side, tax revenue, projected to increase two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars or four point four percent, again, due to higher tax values in the township. Charge for service, DTE, which is pine knob now, is projected to increase a hundred thousand dollars or fifteen point four percent due to an expected increase in security for summer concerts. Charges to Village of Clarkson are projected to increase about eighty-two hundred dollars or six percent due to higher tax values in the village. Other revenue, liaison officer reimbursement is projected to increase about forty-nine hundred dollars or three percent due to a two point eight percent increase in police wages. One thing I do want to mention with this particular budget, I just found out about this today, the way the liaison officers are layered into this budget are not correct at this point in time, I will come back to you probably at the next budget session with a correction, they're just staggered wrong, what's in twenty-two is actually what's supposed to be in twenty-three, twenty-three is, so they're just wrong out here right now, and that was my fault, I actually looked at something wrong and just budgeted it improperly, so we'll come back and correct that later on, that is a current issue with this particular budget.
That's true, then it's slightly high.
I'm sorry?
If that's true, what you said, then the 2023 number is in twenty-two.
Yeah, we're kind of comparing it to, it's not really being compared properly there.
Well, I'm just saying, if you use those numbers in your, it might just be slightly high, that's.
Yes, we will, exactly. On the expenditure, let's see here where we, yeah, then there's two other revenue accounts, both less than three thousand, are increasing the revenue budget by about seven hundred and thirty bucks. Increase to expenditures, charges Oakland County are projected to increase two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars or four point four percent, that's due to the projected two point seven three percent increase in twenty-three, and an additional patrol investigator, which is the additional liaison officer that the school agreed to hire in mid-2022. Charges mini-contracts, projected to increase a hundred thousand dollars or fifteen point four percent, again, this is, this is pine knob again, so it's the same hundred thousand dollars due to increased security at the, for summer concerts.
Is that a pass-through?
It is a pass-through, yes, yeah, whatever we budget, revenues, we budget for expenses, there's no bottom-line impact.
Okay.
There are twelve other expenditure accounts, all of them less than three thousand dollars that are increasing the expenditure budget by thirty-eight hundred dollars, and it's split between labor, about twenty-six hundred dollars, and operating, twelve hundred dollars. Looking at significant decreases to the twenty-three budget compared to twenty-two, on the revenue side, we have ordinance fines, Waymaster is projected to decrease five thousand dollars or seven point seven percent due to lesser violations expected in twenty-three, this has been a funny little account here, just due with the pandemic and everything else, I know that, I believe you have been instructed by the court systems or whoever your superiors are to not write tickets during that period of time, so we weren't getting as many violations and we weren't really seeing the revenue come in here, I believe all of that has been lifted at this point, so hopefully we will see, and I know we got a decrease projected here, but we're a little leery to put anything real significant out there from an increase standpoint, that we actually see some, some actual numbers coming in. District court fines, pretty much the same thing, decrease of fifteen thousand dollars, the courts just are not levying fines or were not levying fines during the pandemic, I believe that has now changed as well, so hopefully we're going to see some increases there, but again, a little bit leery, showing an increase here, so we're going to stick with some decreases and be a little conservative on this. Interest in rents, market value adjustment, projected to decrease to twelve thousand dollars or forty-one percent, again, due to continued low interest rates in the market. Decreases on the expenditure side, small equipment, projected to decrease fifty-five hundred dollars are a hundred percent, that's due to the LiDAR and accessories, and TVs and mounts for security monitoring that was budgeted in twenty-two that will not recur in twenty-three. And there's four others, bless you. There are four other expenditure accounts, both of them less than three thousand dollars that are decreasing the expenditure budget by eighteen hundred dollars, split between labor, a thousand dollars, and operating, eight hundred. And then last but not least here, items that could impact this budget during twenty-three that are not budgeted include ordinance fines coming in less than anticipated, which I hope not, because we, we did a little decrease there, fees to Oakland County coming in higher than projected, and unexpected building repairs. Obviously pages thirteen and fourteen show the actual budget and where fund balance will be over the next couple, two, three years. Are there any questions to the police fund? Yes, sir.
I guess I was talking to you about this earlier, that there was some talk that there might be ARCA money for liaison, that could be construed as security money, you know, coming from the state, so I mean, to me, one of, one of the things that could affect this is, you know, we're budgeting for another liaison now, but if we get ARCA money to, to pay for that liaison, then that could obviously offset some of that.
So this is ARCA money over and above what we've received?
This, this is just, you know, some of the, I guess, documents that I've checked on there is that they've talked about.
Okay.
That's one of the uses.
Well, they're, they're talking about, right now, they're increasing what they give to the schools, but they're talking about having specific money for security or liaison, it could be for people or for security upgrades.
That would make a lot of sense.
You know, to the schools and stuff, so. They were talking about carving that out, instead of just having in general money, it'd be money that they have to spend, schools have to spend on these certain, like, security items, so.
Well, it won't change too much what we do, but it would help, definitely help the schools in paying for it, is what I would see, but.
Well, they share it with us.
Right, I guess, it's a shared expense, and if they get money, then, you know, to me, that should offset some of our money as well.
Maybe they'll pay more.
Well, I guess, that's what I'm getting at, to me, it's something.
I think there's some, some people out there, because they'd be paying a hundred percent.
It's just a touchy subject as far as that goes, and I guess what I mean is, if money comes in for that, it, you know, we should benefit that too, they should just be, you know, just offset the school's portion of it as well, so I just want to bring it up, that should be a item that we put on the exceptions that, you know, things that could affect budgets, so.
Okay, all right. Are there any other questions regarding this budget?
And this is, like I say, the only personnel increases, the proposed liaison officer, right?
Yes.
There was no, nothing in twenty-four, twenty-five for officers as well?
No, that could change depending on, I guess, whatever happens with the millage, you know, because that's coming up for renewal in November, so I mean, that possibly could change, none of that projected budgeting or, or projected millage rate has even been considered in this, at this point in time, because we have no idea whether it can pass or not. So we elected not to put anything in this budget, I mean, obviously, if we had to do something real quick, if the budget passes, or if the, if the millage passes this November, we could probably make some changes to this budget real quick and get it back in front of the board to show them what the changes are, and at that point, we might want to discuss another officer, but I think we're just going to wait and see what happens with the millage and the election at this point.
And pray that it passes.
And pray that it passes, yes. There's no other questions, we'll move on. Thank you, sir. You can actually leave that up here for the, yeah, we'll just keep these up here for the next person that comes up. All right.
Thank you.
The next budget here is the Court of Improvement Authority, or the CIA. Basically, the only activity that's happening in this fund right now over the next three years and further, is we're focusing on repaying the principal and interest, the bond issued for the North Sashaba Road Project, that's the primary function of this fund right now, we're collecting the, the TIF funding and turning right around and basically repaying the general fund, who is basically floating this money to make the principal and interest payments. So right now, over those three years, we've got a total of one point four million dollars that's budgeted to be paid back during those three years. In addition, half a million dollars is being spent for the traffic signal at Walden Center Drive, and this is twenty-two and twenty-three, I'm getting the impression now that that's going to be pushed out to probably twenty-three, twenty-four, so that's something we may want to take a look at, maybe make a tweak to this budget as well, I kept it the way that we budgeted it in twenty-two, just because I'm not a hundred percent sure what's happening with that project at this point in time, so maybe we can find something out over the next couple of weeks and find out what's going on, and if we need to tweak this and push the money out to twenty-three, twenty-four, we can make a quick change on that as well. That half a million dollars will also be repaid to the general fund using TIF funds once the bond, principal, and interest payments have been refunded, so that comes in second, basically. There are some nominal administrative fees out here for Carlisle Wortman, but it's very minor, that's really the only activity in this particular fund. Are there any questions with that one?
The Walden Village Project is part of the CIA.
Just that half a million?
No, I'm talking about just the whole project, that's part of the, it's a tax money.
Oh, yes, that is all.
Generator from Walden Village should go towards the CIT, we captured.
Yes, absolutely, yep, that's what's going to help pay back that principal and interest a lot quicker, so. Moving on to CDVG fund, again, this is a pretty straightforward fund, obviously, we make our request, the senior division of Parks and Rec, they make a request to, to CDVG for funding, the monies that are basically in this particular budget are what we're going to receive at the end of this year, and we always use those funds for the next budget year, so that's what's in here right now, if they make any changes to those numbers before they actually issue the funds, we'll have to come back and change a couple of numbers here and there, but this is basically an in-and-out fund, so every dollar that comes in, we spend it, so there's typically no fund balance unless we have some timing differences, which has happened over the last several years, where we spent the money, turned the money in for reimbursement to the county, but we don't get it back in time, so, and our cutoff is basically two months after year-end, if we don't get that money before that, within that sixty days, then it basically falls into fund balance and then we clean it up the next year, so, but other than that, it's money in, money out. Are there any questions on this particular fund? Okay, moving on to Independence TV. Let's see if we can pull that over here. All right. So Independence TV, again, we're looking at variances on this particular one, three thousand dollars or, or greater. Independence TV is, is kind of an anomaly, there's two different things that are actually happening here, just to, just to inform everybody how this, this fund actually operates, we have PEG fees that come in from Comcast and I believe it's DirecTV, those PEG fees can only be used for very specific things related to basically broadcasting and TV business, things like, you know, upgrading microphones and equipment, things like that, we can use it for, we can use it for purchasing or leasing vans to transport equipment, you know, so there's various things that we can use those funds for, things we can't use them for are basically employment, benefits, we can't use it for anything like that, any other township type expenses, insurance, things like that, we can't use PEG funds for that, so the general fund has to make a contribution to this, this, this particular fund to cover those expenses, so that's why I say there's two things that are actually going on here. So keeping that in mind, in summary, revenues are, revenues are projected to increase about sixteen thousand dollars or five point six percent, labor costs projected to increase about twenty thousand dollars or twenty-seven percent, operating costs, capital outlay projected to increase at just a hundred and five dollars, and our overall contribution to fund balance is a reduction of about twenty-two thousand dollars, which is four thousand less than twenty-two. So, no doubt here, this fund is typically a zero-balance fund, which means no increase or decrease to fund balance, however, the reduction to fund balance is threefold, number one, we've identified some supplies and small equipment, about twelve hundred dollars worth, that can be purchased with PEG fees, number two, the new van lease of sixty-seven eighty can also come from PEG fees, and three, we're projecting a fourteen thousand dollar reduction in PEG fees received, which means we are using fund balance to make our two hundred thousand dollar annual payment to, to the school system. And I know our supervisor has had some conversations with, I believe, the school's super-attendant regarding this, and the fact that we're kind of disconnected here and we keep chewing through our fund balance, something needs to take place here, we need to make a change at some point, and I think that's in the works at this point.
It's in the works, and it'll have to be ongoing.
Correct.
Sorry that Jose is not here to hear that.
Oh, do we want to wait, or?
No, no.
Keep moving on, okay.
We can mention it to him.
Okay. All right, so moving on to the assumptions, due to 5G network being implemented throughout the country, we are assuming a fourteen thousand dollar reduction in PEG fees, the reduction in twenty-two, which was ten thousand dollars, may not be enough based on projected 2022 results, and I'm predicting like one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, so that, that may not be enough at this point. PEG fees will be distributed to the school in four quarterly payments for the capital lease agreement, we have service fees in Springfield Township, that number has not changed, about fifteen hundred dollars a month, so eighteen thousand dollars for the year, that will also be distributed to the school in four quarterly payments. We have a three and a half percent wage increase in all three years for, for the one employee that works there. Hospitalization, again, we've been through this, it's one point three for the, for twenty-three, four point, four percent for twenty-four and twenty-five, ten percent increase for dental vision, five percent for life insurance, short and long-term disability, and then the transfer from general line, which covers a hundred percent of cable TV costs, excluding anything related to PEG fees. So moving into increases, on the revenue side, transfer from general projected to increase about twenty thousand dollars or twenty-eight percent, that's just due to higher wages and benefits of the new Independence TV manager. There's one other revenue account, less than three thousand dollars, that's increasing the budget by seventeen hundred dollars. On the expenditure side for increases, wages, full-time employees projected to increase five thousand dollars or nine point four percent due to higher wage paid to the new Independence TV manager, health insurance premiums projected to increase almost thirteen thousand dollars, that's due to the new manager choosing a family plan compared to the old manager who was single. Then there are six other expenditure accounts, all less than three thousand dollars, that are increasing the budget by twenty-one hundred dollars, split between labor, two thousand dollars, and operating hundred bucks. Significant decreases on the revenue side, PEG fees projected to decrease four thousand dollars or two point one percent, that's again, due to the continued decrease in annual PEG fees from Comcast and DirecTV that are related to the 5G network rollout. There's one other revenue account, less than three thousand, that's decreasing the budget by twenty-four hundred dollars. There's no major expenditure decreases, but there are two other expenditure accounts, both less than three thousand dollars, that are decreasing the budget by a hundred and seventy-two dollars. Items that could impact this budget during twenty-three that are not budgeted, if the program with the school fails, we will need to appropriate additional funds to bring our current operation back to full operational status. And that is it for Independence TV.
Can I just get a clarification? Did you have a question?
Go ahead, Ellen.
The fourteen thousand dollar reduction in PEG fees, is that over two or three years?
No, that's this one year.
This is one year?
That's one year.
Okay, that's important.
It's already been going down, it's just, you know, at first, when this whole 5G thing started up, Supervisor Kittle really reacted to it, and he really made some big cuts those first initial years when you first heard about 5G being rolled out.
Yeah.
None of that has come to fruition, but we are seeing a slight decrease in PEG fees, the franchise fees, on the other hand, they haven't changed, I mean, they're, they're flipping between Comcast and DirecTV, but they aren't changing. I mean, they're flipping between Comcast and DirecTV, but they aren't changing in total like we thought they would. So, that's good news, because if we lose that on the general fund side, that's $600,000 out of that budget. So, that's something why we constantly keep an eye on that, along with the PEG fees, just to make sure that we're not getting into trouble with them all of a sudden cutting something out.
Okay, I'm going to hand this to Jose. This is something that's happening that will have to be discussed with the school. And you can discuss it with Rick to get more details on it. Oh, just. Okay.
Yeah, Jose, we can go over that next week.
Okay, sounds good. I just missed a part, sorry for that. First of all, you're John Elkie, right?
I am.
Nice to meet you. It's the first time.
Not a problem. That's an easy question, by the way, I hope.
Yes, yes. We emailed back and forth, but today it's official, I guess, didn't you? So, you guys were talking about the PEG fees from Comcast and.
And DirecTV. I believe that's who we're getting them from now, yes.
Oh, no AT&amp;T anymore?
I believe DirecTV either bought them out or bought out their share because the checks are coming in from DirecTV now.
Okay, that's why I was kind of a little confused. I said, what, DirecTV? All right, I see. That's all.
You're okay, all right. I think we're all set with ITV then.
Except for I have a question.
Oh, you had another question?
Yeah, just for revenue, one of the things we talked about previous, it's been quite a while, but we talked about way to generate revenue with ITV. And so, we're talking about, I don't want to call it advertising, but it's, we're calling it sponsorships or whatever. Has there been any progress or any more?
Yep, we've discussed that at the ITV Board meeting. And John and I had a really good meeting with Steve Hire and the Superintendent about a week ago. And that subject came up, and they're all in favor of it, and we kicked around some other ideas. And I think John's got that message to.
Yeah, I think one thing we talked about with some of these fees going down, our revenue streams going down, you know, it might be a way to help offset that, you know, because, you know, obviously, there's going to have to, there's going to have to be some adjustment made, because we only have so much fund balance to take that money out of.
And there's potential for a significant amount of money, I think, right from a familiar car dealership in town and, you know, advertising.
You know, one of the sponsorships or whatever. I know there was a talk on how it had to be handled. We're not trying to, you know, be commercial TV, but whatever. I think there's still a revenue stream possibility there to create.
No doubt about it.
Help offset the deficit, I guess, is what I'm getting at.
Yes.
You know what? Another thing I think might need to be mentioned here as well is, you know, we always pay this money to the schools, $200,000 annually. So, what are they doing with that money? Well, I see that number as well, and they've been banking money. Their fund balance, they have about a $400,000 fund balance from those $200,000 payments we've been making to them. So, keep that in mind, too. You know, I mean, yes, we have around $400,000 left in our fund, but they've got another $400,000 sitting over there as well.
We've tried to be pretty aggressive as far as savings from the school side, just to kind of offset the other end that we have. The previous, my predecessors did a great job of kind of making that a priority and it's definitely continue doing so. Or we have that flexibility on the school side to do something that they're looking forward to doing, so.
I think what you're getting at, Jerry, is that at some point in time, we're not going to be able to take out a fund balance, so they might want to pay it.
Exactly.
And that's what Rick's getting at, too. It has to be reduced.
Yep, and that's why I handed that to Jose, so that that's something that, you know, we'll have to take that baton and run with it.
Right, there is another option, too, other than just cutting the payments to the schools. We can go back to Comcast and DirecTV and see if they want to increase the rates, because Mr. Kittle also decreased those during his tenure. So, it's possible we might be able to get that raised back up. It's just another option, whether we want to pursue it or another, you know, whether we want to pursue that or not, that's basically in your court, so, okay? So, I think that's it.
All right.
Moving on to Safety Path.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Safety Path.
Everybody ready?
Oh, wait.
Okay.
Okay, so Safety Path, we're going to start out with their, basically their CIP plan. They, again, put together a 10-year plan with all the various pathway projects and equipment that they plan on purchasing over that 10 years. This narrative basically lays out the three years, and then the actual schedule, which is on page 24, has all of the projects on it for the 10 years that I just mentioned. So, in 2023, we're looking at, let me back up here. Right now, the CIP plan calls for future spending for equipment of about $156,000 and actual path projects totaling $4.5 million. And of that, $24,000 is planned for equipment and $858,000 is planned for projects in 2023. So, what makes up the 800 and, basically, those two, $882,000. We have the OHM Construction Engineering for Safe Routes to School. It's been increased to $308,000, and that's been moved out or forward from 2022. And it was increased by $58,000. I had mentioned that earlier. Fleming's Lake Road to Firefox.
Excuse me, Rick, I want to ask Dave, do you think that Safe Routes to School is a viable project for the future? Is that going to be, is that going to go away, you think?
Well, to put it bluntly, it's on life support right now. We're still waiting on the decision from MDOT if they're going to accept the modified scope of project.
Really?
Two weeks ago, a week and a half ago, we asked them again. We asked the lead from MDOT, and he said, "We're still reviewing it. We'll let you know soon." That literally was it.
So, that may not come back?
If it doesn't come back favorably, they won't change the scope, because for the board's benefit is revised estimates that came in. Our grant was just under $2 million. The revised construction estimate came in at like a million dollars more. And when I immediately got supervised fishing, I'm like, there's no, you know, we don't bring that much in one year for our fund. So, how do you walk away from $1.2 billion grant that's been approved? So, I came up with the idea to say, well, let's ask the state if we could modify the original scope and not eliminate, there's not one school that's going to be affected or, you know, lose anything. They'll all have be touched, which is the big thing with this program. But if we could just reduce the scope a little bit to get the estimated construction cost back into the grant area, for what our grant is.
And the school agreed to it.
And the school was all on board with it, because they got all, you know, skin in the game with the state.
Yes.
You know, with all these costs that are not grant-covered, so, we're waiting, so.
It's unbelievable.
You know, I think it's fair to say that, you know, we have to wait till the state decides if they, then we'll make that decision. I'll come to the board and we'll make a decision on whether we move forward with it or not, but it's still on life support. It's still live, so that's why we kept it in the budget.
Yeah, thank you.
It's a waiting game.
Waiting game.
Let's see here. I mentioned the Fleming's Lake Road to Firefox sub, $250,000. We have Sashawah Road between Independence Oaks, and that's the northern entrance up to Oak Hill, $300,000. And then we have two walk-behind mowers, roughly $12,000 each, other $24,000. In '24, we're looking at spending $1.4 million. That includes the Clarkston Road from Wingate to Sashawah. Again, this was moved forward from 2022, and the amount increased about $150,000. It was $250,000, now it's up to $400,000, based on latest estimates and cost increases. Walden Road Connector, $1 million. And again, that is probably going to be predicated based on whether Walden Road gets paved, and it will be the pathway that connects to Orient, correct?
No, this is, this is, I'm sorry. This is the one that we were trying to connect, the Walden Road Connector, from the east side of I-75 over to the west side of 75. Are you sure that?
It's going to go along the hotel.
This is the million-dollar.
No, yes, that's the one by the hotel. The one for '25, that's part of the Safe Routes to Schools project that is on us to do. Safe Routes to Schools, they have to have a 10-foot wide pathway. Or you can split it five foot on one side of the road, five foot on the other. This is on us for that. That's why we pushed it out to '25, because we asked the grant to be pushed out to '25 for Safe Routes to School. The Walden Road Connector, we probably should work on that, Ron, in our naming of our projects and our Safety Path.
Yeah.
Trusty Richie's aware of it. This is a connector to the hotel, come off Walden, kind of follow the.
It's a different way to.
A different way to get across the.
Correct.
Comes out by entrance by now.
Right, by entrance by Pineapple, connects into the hotel.
If you can get it, you can call it the Richie Connector.
The Richie Connector.
Yep. But it's on the budget. The Safety Path committee has kept that fairly high, high on their priority list, and that's what the budget is predicated on.
Is that unusually expensive on a per foot basis? It doesn't seem like it's that long.
The problem with that one is MDOT, I have to give permission for them, because it's kind of their right-of-way.
Also, we have to get easement from the golf course.
Yes, and there's a lot of.
I thought we had some kind of deal with them to allow that if we granted something.
We almost did.
Oh, we didn't make that deal, okay. All right, I remember that.
Yeah, we did get a process then from the engineers, and there was, you know, some retaining, a lot of retaining wall that had been put in.
Thank you.
It's a pretty steep hill right there.
That's big, obviously. We should probably change the name of the project, though, because it is a little bit confusing.
It is, it absolutely is.
I apologize for that.
Yeah, no, I'm.
Two or three things named the same.
Trusty Richie's fault.
Sashawah to Walden Connector.
We used to call the red line.
And this is just an alternative, because we talked about how expensive it is to modify the bridge, going, you know, the Walden Bridge across 75. And so, we're trying to still find a way to get across without, to do it safely.
Everybody knows that 75 cut through the little township, it's kind of hard, not motorized pathways across. Right, okay, expensive.
Okay, moving on, finishing up '24 here, we have a sickle bar mower and a utility trailer that we're looking to purchase. And then moving on into '25, we just kind of talked about it here, widened Walden Road pathway in conjunction with Safe Routes to School. We have Sashawah Road from Clarkston to Park Crest Sub, $300,000, and then another zero-turn riding mower. So, that's basically a quick summary of the three years that we have budgeted for Safety Path and the projects we're looking at completing. Again, the very next page here, page 24, it actually gives you the whole 10-year plan, if you want, if you're curious about anything that's happening after '25. Moving on to the actual Safety Path Fund itself. We are going to be looking at variances here, $3,000 or greater. So, again, in summary, we have revenues projected to increase about $58,000 or 6.4%. Labor costs projected to increase about $2,500 or 1.9%. Operating slash capital costs projected to increase about $755,000 or 218%. And our overall planned decrease to fund balance came in about $275,000. Assumptions that we're using with this budget. Again, we have an approved millage, which you just did tonight, of .4162, and that's been adjusted for Headley. We have got 3.25% wage increases in there for '23 and '24, and 2% in '25 for all employees. Again, hospitalization, life insurance are all the same thing. I'm not going to run through those again. Two walk-behind mowers are scheduled for '23 with a budget of $24,000. We talked about some of these projects already, so I'm not going to rehash them all. Let's move on to significant increases to the '23 budget when compared to '22. On the revenue side, property tax revenue projected to increase $33,000 or 4.4%. Again, due to the higher tax values within the township. The reimbursement projected to increase about $29,000. This line item represents the amount owed to the township by Clarkson Community Schools for their portion of the construction engineering for Safe Routes to School. Again, this project has been delayed and will be rebudgeted in '23. However, the original estimate of $250,000 has been increased to $308,000 and is the sole reason for the $29,000 increase. That number right here is still going up. There's still another amendment out there that we haven't even seen yet. So, I'm not sure how high that 308 is going to go. But we will definitely keep you apprised of it as we get more information on it. On the expenditure side, increases contractual services projected to increase about $22,500 or $256,000. That's primarily due to adding $20,000 for boardwalk structural inspection, something we have not done yet. This is a new expenditure and will appear in odd years only. Repairs and maintenance, Safety Pass projected to increase $50,000. And again, we just, we need to throw more money at maintenance to the existing path. So, we're throwing an extra $50,000 out there, or what above the 100 we had out there. So, we're looking at throwing $150,000 a year out there for the next three years to try to take on some of these larger repair projects.
And that's because of the age of the system.
It is, you know, we're starting to run into that, exactly.
Got to start looking back at what we installed already and take care of that.
Yeah.
Well, some of the stuff that you did was originally asphalt, and you're replacing it with cement, right?
Correct.
Hopefully, make it last longer.
Equipment projected to increase 17.5, and again, that's for two new walk-behind mowers versus one budgeted in '22. Pathways projected to increase 671,000 or 368%. And that's just basically the difference between projects year over year. And again, that takes into consideration the budget amendment that I put, that presented earlier. Those projects have already been removed from these numbers. I just needed the official okay to remove them. And then there's 12 other expenditure accounts, all less than $3,000, that are increasing the expenditure budget by about $4,000. Split between labor, $2,600 bucks, and operating about $1,400 bucks. Significant decreases to the '22, '23, oh, I got a mistake, '23 budget when compared to '22.
Fix it for you.
Yeah, I got it. On the revenue side, really just interest in rents, market value adjustments projected to decrease about $4,300. And again, that's due to the continued low interest rates in the market. On the expenditure side, leasing charges projected to decrease $4,800 or 82%. That's due to a previously leased truck that was purchased from Enterprise in 2022. We couldn't pass this one up. It's a 2018. It was coming off of lease and is in immaculate condition. We got it for $6,000, or roughly that. So, it was kind of a no-brainer just to buy it and be done with it. So, eliminated that lease payment, basically. There are five other expenditure accounts, all less than $3,000 bucks, that are decreasing the expenditure budget by $2,600, split between labor, about $80, and operating capital about $2,500. And items that could impact this budget during '23 that are not budgeted, a major equipment breakdown, unexpected major repair to the Safety Path, and approved major project that may not be budgeted that might come out of the woodwork. Other than that, obviously, you have the operating statement you can take a look at and see how fund balance is progressing. But other than that, Safety Path is finished. Are there any other questions to Safety Path?
I just have a quick one, because you brought up buying that van or whatever. Like, I know we have the people come up for the health and dental and all that and give us their proposals and choices. How often are those insurances looked at, like?
Oh, like your medical insurances?
No, those are looked at, but like the insurance you have covering your vans and things like that.
That's every year. Yes, looked at every year.
Like new companies doing bids, is what I mean?
I believe they do, yeah.
Okay.
They're all insured through MMR.
Well, through MMR.
It's all through government insurance. We don't, we don't use.
We are, that's exactly what it is.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. And we have two smaller ones yet here to wind this down. The next one here is the North Sashawah Debt Service Fund. This fund is strictly out there to basically take a contribution from the general fund to make a principal and interest payments, and then we make the principal and interest payments. We do not carry a fund balance on this one at all. So, it's, you know, we have the amortization schedule from the bond documents. That is what's used and what drives this fund, basically, as to where we get our numbers from. Other than that, there is no other activity in this particular fund. And last but not least, move on to the Walters Lake Fund.
Where is Walters Lake? Just kidding.
I was going to say, come on.
Where is Walters back door, the backyard?
So, just a little background here, Walters Lake Improvement Board was established under Part 309, the Inland Lake Improvements of Michigan's Natural Resources Environmental Protection Act. Excuse me, in accordance with the act, the Walters Lake Improvement Board includes the lakefront property owner, a representative from each local unit of government abiding Walters Lake, the County Water Resources Commissioner, or designate, and a county commissioner. So, in 2013 and 2018, the Walters Lake Improvement Board held a public hearing on a five-year improvement program for Walters Lake. Primary focus of the program is the control of nuisance, aquatic plant growth, plant control activities in Walters Lake are coordinated under the direction of the Lake Board's Environmental Consultant, Progressive AE. In this particular fund, we're only looking at variances greater than $1,500. There's really not a lot of activity in here. I believe the board is getting ready to establish another budget here. Is that next year?
Yep.
Okay.
Excuse me, Progressive, are they hired by the Water Resource Commissioner? Excuse me, Progressive, are they hired by the water resource commissioner?
Yes.
No, the board, the board can put them out for bid, the Lake Board can.
Okay. Do you do that from time to time? No.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
So in summary on this one, revenues projected to increase about $1,700 or 3.6%. Operating costs are projected to be flat, and our overall reduction to fund balance came in about $1,900, $2,000 rounded, which is about 1,688 better than the '22 budget. On the increase side, there's really only the one increase here, that's to the special assessment revenue projected to increase about $1,800 or 4%. And that's due to an increase in the actual amount that we charge annually.
Yep.
There's one other revenue account, less than $1,500, an increase in the revenue budget by $155,000. There are no increases to expenditures, there are no decreases to revenues, besides a small one here for $261 bucks, and no decreases to expenditures. So it's a pretty straightforward budget, obviously it will change next year when the board does the next five-year plan.
Why is Walters Lake the only lake fund that's listed? Because we have multiple lakes.
It is the only one that I am aware of, that we do anything with.
The Independence Township is strictly on, because Lake Oakland also is part of Waterford, and Wamiga is part of Springfield, and the Milpon has, is managed through the village.
What about Deer Lake?
Deer Lake doesn't have a lake board that's involved.
Van Norman has a thing, and it's...
Van Norman isn't Waterford.
It's controlled by Waterford.
Yep, that's why this is the only one on our books.
Deer Lake is basically a private lake, the people take care of that themselves.
Yeah, they don't have a lake board.
Right. Well, they have a, some kind of, like, association that takes care of it, but it's not, it's not through anything that the township has to levy on the tax, because the lake boards, they're on the tax bill for each lake that person has access to or value of, then it shows on your taxes, what the, the money that comes off of the lake board. I thought there'd at least be one on the lake, Walters Lake's the only one, though.
It's the only one that doesn't have adjoining property in other communities that participate.
Morgan Lake?
Well, the other ones, like, Paul's saying, it's like, they don't, they must not be, they mustn't have a lake improvement board, because these are the ones that have a lake improvement board that you're, that there's like an SAD.
Somebody's petition for it or something, yeah.
So, you know, there could be some smaller lakes that don't have that.
Yeah.
Or like Deer Lake that has its own association and doesn't have anything to do with the township.
Park Lake? To a community.
That's it for the budget session today.
That's it. Rick, thank you so much for putting this together.
You're welcome.
Nice job.
As I said, if you have any questions, if anything comes up even afterwards, feel free to send me an email, I'll be happy to answer them for you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a quick one on the Safety Path that popped in my mind. Do you go visit, like, SNCOG and all those other resources that offer money for different things like that?
We have worked with SNCOG and other places to try and get grant money and that type of stuff, yes, you know, that's been part of the process and everything, so...
As a matter of fact, I think we've got this potential for a grant for Safety Path in connection with the DDA, that if actually, it would be a significant Safety Path, significant.
Like, when you go north of Walden or White Lake Road on Dixie Highway, we have paved shoulders, but there's no sidewalks north of there.
It's like luring people into trouble.
Well, I'm just saying, people think, you know, hey, here's a sidewalk, well, it's really a paved shoulder, so the county doesn't promote that as a walkway, because it's too, they consider it to be too dangerous.
Too dangerous.
Right, so, like, one of the things I think Jerry is thinking with the DDA is that you could have regular Safety Pass, you know, back off the road that go farther, all the way to the end of the township, because like right now, our basic, our Safety Pass is into White Lake Road.
Right.
I was thinking the one you were talking about by the hotel there and stuff, like, creative ways that if it was lined with certain plants or something, are there other natural resource avenues to look at it as like a park walkway?
Right.
Well, that's, like, we talked about the Safe Routes to Schools, that's a grant program to get money to, you know, to put any pathways that are connecting you to schools and that type of thing, so, so there, those are, those are multiple things that we've done. We've even tried to work with ITC, you know, to try and use those corridors, they haven't been forthcoming on that, even though they have done it for other entities like Inova and stuff, they haven't, they haven't been willing to do it in our area anyway, so...
We need Jim Tetter.
We can always ask.
Yeah. Okay.
You can ask and still.
Thanks, Rick.
You're welcome.
Board member comments? I have one comment that next week, we from today, September 27, is a special board meeting to review and meet with candidates for treasurer, and for that situation, I am going to ask the board for permission to recuse myself, because the treasurer obviously has the sole and exclusive authority to appoint the deputy, and so I would really ask the board, and it would be, since that's the only business on the agenda that night, there would be no reason for me to be there, and I prefer not to be there to have an appearance of influencing anything, so I would ask the board, at this point, to approve my recusal from the meeting.
Really quick, we just forgot the last two reports for people's reading enjoyment on the agenda.
Can we do this, just to get it done?
Sure.
Thank you. If there is a motion...
I thought that had to go in order, that's all.
Wow.
He's doing board member comments, that's what he's saying.
Yeah.
So, that's why he's bringing it up, but, I guess I'll move that Jerry can recuse himself for the meeting on next Tuesday night, for interviews of the treasurer.
So is that roll call or just a second?
Is there a second?
Hold on, right now.
I don't want to rush Paul.
No. Want to make this correct, right?
Second.
Moved it, seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I guess I can't vote on that. Any opposed? Thank you very much, I really appreciate that. So I will not appear at the meeting. Communications, Open County Sheriff's Department Monthly Report, and Information Tech Oversight Committee Minutes from July 19. Terry, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Have you heard, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
You moved it?